The time is 6:00 PM and we will call the regular December 14th, 2015, meeting of the Trail City Board of Education to order and have roll call please.
Dyke.
Present.
Walker.
Here.
Crispy absent. May Cumber.
Here.
Wintering.
Here.
Four members present, one absent. Agenda item two is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections, Dr. Cox?
There are. We have two instructional assistants that we would like to appoint tonight, Pam Mitchell, Alexa Merkel, and we have a prom advisor, Laura Walker.
Is there a motion?
I want the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda as corrected. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Walker.
Yes.
May Cumber.
Yes.
Wintering.
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item two-three is the welcome of the visitors and public comment. Before I do this, I will remind people that we did start a half an hour early this evening at 6:00 PM instead of 6:30. The hope is that we could adjourn before 7:30 so that the board could attend the music concert next door in the auditorium, which starts at 7:30. As we begin our agenda tonight, I'll explain our process for public comment. The board will hear comments from the public in conjunction with each agenda item using a structured process. As board president, I will ask for comments when we reach that item on the agenda. You will be asked to approach the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes. At this time, I invite any member of the audience to step up to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Please begin by stating your name and contact information. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to two minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak, as well as allowing the board to complete the full board agenda in a timely manner. Comments from the public are limited to matters within the board's authority. Please understand that we as a board cannot discuss items not already on the agenda. Iowa sunshine law prohibits us from having a discussion without the proper notice to all of the school district community that the issue would be discussed at tonight's board meeting. Also, please remember, you are making comments in a public meeting. Should you make comments that the subject of the comments considers to be inflammatory or libelous, you as an individual may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of your comments. Thank you for your support of our school district. Are there any comments from the public this evening? Seeing no one, we will move on to agenda item four, comments by board members and superintendent, and we'll start off with Dr. Cox.
Thank you. Last Thursday, we were notified that our teacher leadership and compensation system application grant had been approved for 2016-17. This will allow us to hire five and a half instructional coaching positions across the district for next year, so that was good news. Today, we had several guests in town from the Iowa Big Program in Cedar Rapids, and they spoke to our students, as well as students from New Hampton, Osage, and Rockford, and gave them insights as to what our STEM best program is going to offer students from all four school systems later this year and then into next year. We had our best bus inspection ever last week, and in fact, the state inspector said that it was one of the best he could recall of all the school vehicle inspections that he does across the state. And having a mechanic on staff is a key part of why ours went so well, so I want to say hats off to Kurt Carey for the work that he did. And then lastly, we received the evaluation feedback for two of our three sessions at the school board convention in Des Moines. Our Classroom of the Future in Action session scored a 4.5 out of 5, and our Winning Over the Hearts and Minds session scored a 4.7 out of 5. So awesome feedback there from the convention. Thank you again to Justin DeVore, to board members, all four of you here who were part of those sessions, and then our teachers and students. You all contributed time and energy to make those sessions possible, and I want to thank you for that.
Very good news. Any comments by board members?
Building and grounds, I'll talk to Charlie's.
Oh, sure.
Building and grounds met today, and we, Charlie, we talked to Charlie by phone, by way of phone, about the agreement with the middle school sale. He said everything is, he's working on the documents, get it set to us possibly by next week. There's a lot of moving parts, but no surprises. Everything's going fine, and is working on getting an assessment to get the school on the historic register. So, no hitches.
Additionally, Jerry gave us some updates on LED light project being completed in all of the buildings but this one. And the pool update, Jerry had given an update on that. If, I'm not sure we're all aware, that a month or so ago, the power went out for an extended period of time here, allowing half of the pool water to drain in the basement of this building, which was about four feet deep is what Jerry said, 180-some thousand gallons of water. They were, he was able to, one of the custodians was able to find a fix, and they were able to get that situation fixed so that hopefully that does not happen again when the power goes out, so, which was, seems like a no-brainer.
Good.
Beyond that, I think we'll talk change orders later and things like that.
Wanted to mention, he told us some facts about the LED lightings, that at one point they were putting in a thousand light bulbs a day, is what they averaged, and was real happy with the company we'd gone with, that they had at any one time that 68 people here working to get that project done in a timely manner and what was not disruptive to our classes and students.
Very good. Laura.
Oh, nothing really, we'll be talking about our finance committee meetings that we've had. We've had a couple of finance committee meetings, and some of that is on our agenda later on.
The only thing I would add would be that on Saturday, December 5th, Robin and I went down to the radio station at 8:00 AM and were on Comet Connection with Eric Hofer, and that hour flew by rather quickly, didn't realize how fast that time could go, having a conversation about the schools. But we want to thank Mr. Hofer and KCHA for allowing us to spend that time to talk about the district and our happenings down at the state convention with BLDD and everyone else, so.
Very good.
If there's nothing else, we'll move on to agenda item five, which is the Phase Two discussion. This is an information discussion item. We have Gene Underwood from BLDD Architects here to have a conversation with us about potential Phase Two and the gymnasium option that we currently have up there.
That's correct. And I brought a couple exhibits. These are older documents from previous presentations, just as a refresher for what the plans were or currently are as they stand for the master plan. Jess, would it be possible for you to scroll down towards the end? Right there. So, as it stands right now, you can see the existing high school in kind of the tan color. The gray area is the current addition, or pretty close to the current addition, this is an old document. And then the dark dashed lines are the Phase Two portion of the project, which is going to be, or is planned to be, learning studios for the high school on the lower right corner, which is the east of the learning studios that are under construction right now. Then to the south and east, gymnasium and auditorium addition. And then at the north wing, renovation of the existing high school north wing and a small addition across the front of that. And then the circle portion of the high school and the existing gymnasium, industrial tech area, and cafeteria would all be demoed, becoming a parking lot area and circulation. And I think I've got a plan that shows that. So you can see the main visitor parking for the complex in the center, taking up the area where the circles currently are. So this is, this is the plan as it stands right now, building out the parking on the north end, completing the parking on the east, brand-new parking on the south. So the master plan as we've been developing it to this point. I reviewed the document that was put together by FEH, pretty much just pertaining to the items that had to do with the school. It was a long document. And looking at the different options that were presented for having a YMCA on the campus, keeping the south wing of the high school, doing some sharing of facilities, those kinds of things. You know, and I think that, talking through that with John and Sam in our office, Sam is the director of our pre-K-12 education program, John is the director of our fitness and recreation program, we've done a number of YMCA's also in the past. And just a few thoughts that we had on joint use facilities, things that you should be thinking about as you're moving forward. First of all, is it possible to put it on the site? Yes. But things that you should, you should be considering as the conversation moves forward that we came up with, is to think about what does the school want to get out of this arrangement? How is it going to change your master plan? Do you have access to the spaces that you want to use when you need them? How is the time shared and the spaces shared throughout the school day, after school, weekends, those kinds of things? How feasible is it on the site? Looking at some of the sketches, it looked like there were some, going to be some issues with the grading slope, kind of the exact placement. I think that's something that would definitely need to be studied a little bit more with the site that we have, especially where we've got the loop road kind of connecting into the old parking lot. It looked like in some of the plans, there was addition, kind of going out over into that ravine area that dropped offs very steeply. So I think you have to be really careful about looking at the cost for some of those options, and that's something that can be investigated. The one thing that we really felt you needed, and this is based on experience with other joint use facilities, is to, don't go into it blind, will you get the value you think you're getting? And keeping it in mind that typically with a joint use project, no one comes out getting everything they want. It is a compromise. You're not going to get everything you want, and not everybody's going to be 100% happy in the end. So keeping those things in mind, there's a lot of stuff that you can study and look through as a big decision, and so just being cognizant of those things. Looking at what is the best cost-benefit ratio for the district as far as educational performance, environment, lifecycle costs, those kinds of things. And in the past with the district, we've used our CLEO software, the Quantitative Learning Environment Outcome, which does a ratio of cost, lifecycle cost, educational benefits, those kinds of things, to help put a number to some of those things. Because it is easy to say, okay, well, the upfront cost for this option is $14 million. The upfront cost for this is $30 million. How does that end up, you know, 30, 40, 50 years down the road, and how does that affect our educational environment? And so there are ways to kind of look at that, and so keep that in mind if that is an option available to you as well, from us. I think the last point that we really wanted to make sure everyone was clear on is funding. If a YMCA project is done concurrently with a school project, is there enough funding available within the community? If you're going to referendum for a school project, is doing a Y project at the same time going to take away some of that funding capability? And where are your priorities? Is it a phased approach, where the school is done first, the Y is done second, the Y is done first, the school is done second? Because there are going to be a limited pool of resources. So those are the things that we came up with as thoughts. I think I've got one more slide. This was an alternate master plan configuration that rotated the high school education portion on the lower right so that we could maintain the views in the courtyard space. So I threw that in here. You can see in this one, some of the south addition is kind of moved and shifted up as well. So this, I don't remember which meeting this came from, but it was another option that we had reviewed. I've also got in this PDF, probably 15 pages of the original master planning work we did when we looked at like, you know, nine different options. So I'm not going to get into those unless you'd like to, but be happy to answer any questions you guys might have, or you can kind of pick my brain if you'd like. Otherwise, I don't have a whole lot else to offer at this point. Of course, we'd be happy to join you. I think in January, there's a work session or a joint board meeting, if you'd like us to attend, happy to do that as well.
Any questions for Gene or administration?
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering out loud, if, you know, I'm, I'm interested to have this joint meeting with the Y and have the conversation with them and hear what their board is interested in. You know, this, this whole idea of having a Y up here at the high school was really embraced by the public. The public was really asking for this during this survey. But, you know, you're right about the funding, you know, where they are a private entity, they would have to fully fundraise for that. And, you know, there might be some part of that high school that, like the gym and maybe that industrial arts area, that might be beneficial to development. However, before we get to that point, if the Y is in favor of it, I'm thinking that we need to do our due diligence and go through the CLEO and evaluate that space versus new construction, if there's some interest on their part. That's the only thoughts I have at this point, and I don't, I don't know when you, when you get to that point and decide to pull the trigger, but, you guys have any thoughts on that?
As far as the timeframe? No, sometime in the future.
Or the, or the CLEO.
The CLEO. I think we need to have this meeting on January 5th, and personally, I would just assume that we delegate the Buildings and Grounds Committee to attend that versus an entire board, but that's my personal opinion.
Well, I guess we can.
Is that part of?
Are we talking about that now, or is that further on the agenda?
That's part of this agenda item. It's not an action item, but.
I originally had felt that way too, that it would be fine with Buildings and Grounds, but then I have to think back to the other meetings that we've had with the community, and we as a board fully showed up to the meeting in regards to the baseball fields to show a team support and the importance of this. And I just don't want this to be underscored in the least by not having.
A full board.
Possibility of a full board presentation. This is, our whole Phase Two, basically, doesn't it pivot somewhat on their decision? And it's important to know.
This is an initial meeting, and it's five people out of the Y board rather than all 17 of their current board members.
It's not going to be the entire board?
No, it's five members. It's their executive committee. It's a couple of people from TLC, and so the intent, when I was visiting with Lance, would be, let's get a couple of people from the board.
Okay.
But if you, five felt that you all wanted to be there, then we'll send all five of you. But this is just to get the conversation started. This isn't to be.
Oh, okay. So.
We're going to meet and make a decision.
This is a free meeting before, when it comes down to, I would like to have us, with their full board and our full board, so that we can express and see, or we can, you can tell a lot by sitting with people as to which decision they're going to make.
I would, I would like to be at that meeting, you know.
At this initial meeting?
Yeah. I mean, if it's going to be Buildings and Grounds meeting, I'd like to be sitting in the audience then, because it'll probably be an open meeting to the public, wouldn't You know, I feel like that, you know, it's hard to know what will happen at that meeting, but if we do anything with the Y, that is, that is the basis on which Phase Two might hinge, like you say. You know, where is Phase Two going to be? Will it attach to that part of the building? Do they want that building, or do they just want a new construction?
This is just opening up the conversation, though.
I know.
Decisions will be months, if not years, down the road.
I agree, but I think there's a whole lot that can be understood at that first meeting.
I agree with Dana. I think it's a very preliminary thought or conversation of what's going to happen. You know, I talked to Lance about it a little bit, and, you know, we've had, obviously, we've all had some sort of informal conversation for two years with Lance or various Y board members about thoughts and whatever, and, you know, as it goes with this, I mean, it's obviously a part of this discussion and a part of this moving forward. You know, I'll say that there's, there's very little that I've seen tonight that I support on our end of this. You know, I, I think that when we get to this position in our part of the Phase Two discussion, I prefer that to be almost a ground zero start of where we're at with the, the site and a public discussion of what does the public want to see again. My assumption is that the public's going to say, if you tear down that gym and try and build another one, I'm going to vote no. Or if you tear down a bunch of this other space that's going to be simple, and I won't say simple, but industrial tech space that's open shop right now, and it functions very well as it does, as it is, they're going to vote no. So I think those conversations with the public need to be had as it relates to our decisions on Phase Two. Obviously, a conversation with the Y slightly either complicates or enhances that discussion, either one, but that's kind of where I stand with, with some of this that we've seen going forward on, on this.
I think you're absolutely right, Jason. You do have to start at ground zero and reevaluate what's our vision from this point moving forward. What are, what is our program? What are our goals? What will the community support? And go through that community engagement, go through the meetings, go through the whole process again.
Yeah.
Because what you decided two years ago may not be the direction.
Absolutely.
It's time for course correction. How is the new middle school functioning? What do you like? What do you not like? How does that affect the way you're using the site? You have to answer a lot of those questions before you can start to answer the question of how do we fit a Y into this program? Where do we, where do we see an overlap? Where do we see a benefit to the district? Where do we see a benefit to the Y? You know, there's so much to look forward to.
Through, through months and months and months of conversation with staff.
Mm-hmm.
On the layout of the middle school.
Absolutely.
I assume we'll do the same with the high school.
Yep.
You know, all of that stuff is, is going to be.
And priorities that you had two years ago may not be the same priorities you have now.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Or two or three years in the future when we potentially get to Phase Two.
Right, right. Exactly.
Four or five years in the future, whenever that happens to be.
Give my additional comments to that is that any of the Phase Two actions or discussions we start to talk about will cost money at some point. We have no budget for Phase Two right now. We have no money for, dedicated to running any analysis or, or spending any extra time with architects, so I think a lot of that discussion will have to be had as part of this process as well.
And, and that CLEO would be part of that, then?
Typically, yes, part of your, part of your community engagement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the comments and questions you had that you've talked about, we have a copy of those, or we'll?
Yeah, I can send you. I'll email you guys tomorrow morning, or, well, not tomorrow morning, I'll be driving.
Whenever.
Soon, very soon. Things to think about and to keep, keep in the back of your mind. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much, Gene.
You're welcome.
Very good.
Would you like me to stay for some of the later agenda items regarding the construction project? I think maybe the number 13, 12, 13, 14.
She's not driving home tonight, so.
Not driving home tonight, so.
If you wouldn't mind.
The change, 13 might be.
The change order would be appropriate.
Fine, we'll hang around.
Thank you. Agenda item six is the math conference presentation.
I see several people here. I'm not sure who's going to take the lead. Maybe one of them will self-identify. Is it Mr. Wolf? Is it? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
All right, on behalf of the, some of the math department here that is able to attend, wanted to share with you, November 11th, 12th, and 13th during our PD week on our district calendar, 11 of us had the good fortune of going up to Minneapolis, Minnesota to the National Council, National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. I listened to a lot of presenters, breakout sessions, basic principles were taught, concepts, everything you could think about math took place, from kindergarten through calculus. One thing nice about it, it was all based on a kind of a transformation that has taken place also at the elementary at Lincoln in Washington with the lab classrooms and the principles to action, ensuring mathematics success for all. So that was kind of the premise of the whole conference. During that, a lot of the resources that were described or used, structures and policies that exist, kind of came down to six basic elements that are essential in teaching and learning, access and equity to all, curriculums, tools and technology, assessments, professionalism, and ensuring that math is taught, I don't know, correctly, if you will, to everybody. So we have some math lab classrooms started at Lincoln and Washington right now, year two. And what our goal was is, as we drove up in the, in the van, in my van and the other vehicles, we really talked a lot about how we're going to scale that into the middle school, what that, all that effort to learn and inquiry and question and understand math, how that is going to look if I'm a fifth grader today, what that's going to look like as a sixth grader tomorrow and a seventh grader. Now, we don't know what that's going to look like at the high school when you're in a trig and stat or a calc class, but we do know that if we're putting a lot of energy into this, we want that transition to take place in some of our middle school classrooms. So the opportunity to evolve for a 12, 5, 12 campus and a 5, 6, 7, 8 middle school, that'll be a lot of our work in the future. So I'm going to turn it over to these guys and let them talk about little aha moments that are going to be all part of that scaling process.
Should we start low and go high? Start low and go high. We'll start low and go high.
I'm Laura Walker, and I teach second grade at, I guess Sheila and I. At Washington, of course, yes. Sheila and I went to a lot of the PK2 breakout sessions, and we just really heard a lot about teaching the talk moves that our math coach, Pam, has talked a lot to us about, and then engaging the students in the discussion and how important the discussion is even in the kindergarten, first, second grade classroom, to build that into the third, fourth, fifth grade classrooms. Developing their number sense, that's kind of a lot of our sessions we're about. We, just really making sure that they can compose and decompose the numbers and being able to break them apart and having that strong math foundational base to take them into other aspects.
Can you talk about the research? Oh. Hi, I'm Sheila. I teach first grade at Washington. What we, what we found out is that at the elementary, we're doing a lot of things right. It was encouraging to us, like, sitting in, we felt like we kind of knew what they were going to say, and we had a lot of good things in place, thanks to our administrators and getting things going. We're by far not perfect at all, but it was fun to sit there and go, hey, we already do that, and we do that. And so that was, that was great. Something else that was really great, honestly, was the drive there in home and the time together to collaborate with middle school and high school teachers and just talk about what's happening there and what's happening here and how it really does, all tied together, like my six-year-olds really are doing algebra in a different way and just getting them prepared. So that was really good for us to share and talk about materials and just strategies and things like that. The conference reached all of us one of, the first day, the last speaker, we're all like, oh my gosh. And David's like, that was awesome. Of course it was. You understood what he was talking about. He's some calculus guy. I had no idea what he was talking about. So the conference, like, was so good for all of us from one end to the other and created great conversations for us. So we were very encouraged, and also just to get to know our team a little bit better and sharing those strategies and things.
I'm Toni Smith. I teach eighth grade math, so I'm talking for the middle school teachers. Few things that they've said that I've also grasped the number sense idea. It's still a It's still a really important thing in middle school. There was tons of resources shared. One of them I used in my class and kind of forgot about it, and so started using it again. So number sense is huge. Let's see. Oh, I know Mr. Wolf was at this session, but using manipulatives still in the middle school, they kind of get forgotten and we just get so used to process, this is how you do it, this is what you should do. But still important to build from the, you know, representational concrete all the way up to the, just writing it out, showing the process. So I found that interesting. And again, it's something that you know and that you just need things reinforced and reminded, and you're doing the things, but just to keep doing what you have done. The car ride has been mentioned a couple times, but some light has been shed on us, middle school teachers, that we know that the elementary is going to have this new way of learning and understanding and questioning and inquiry-based thought. And so we really need to work on carrying that through into the middle school. They're going to be different thinkers, and so we want to keep that going. We don't want to stop that process once they hit the middle school. So that conversation was had and had again, so we're trying to do things and hope to get to the elementary to visit their classrooms and see how they're doing things there. And then just a lot of free resources were shared, and you can't go wrong with free resources.
I'm Dave Williams. Teach the high school, and I got some comments from our, my fellow high school teachers. David Vovis was there, and the guy was, he actually was under the weather, but he mucked through it. Some highlights for him is collaboration. So he ended up having a Waverly Shell Rock teacher come up, Billy Eckerott came up and to observe how David's doing some work with general math. You know, that could, you know, collaboration between schools is great. That's one side, side effect of having, going to these conferences. He wanted to thank everybody for letting him go, and he learned some additional math songs to teach math concepts. Okay? New manipulatives and other things. I liked it. My first session I went to, I learned a lot about geometry, the Common Core standards. Really shed some light on me, and I'll use that going forward quite a bit. Math curriculum director from St. Louis showed a standards-based gradient approach to Algebra I, and it was, you know, that opened my eyes, too. It wasn't all numbers. It was just lots of circles on, showing what a kid could do. So if they transferred or, you know, when they moved on to the next level, that was a snapshot of what they did, not eighty-five percent or something like that. I went to a good session on the calculus of Corvettes. I guess I'd have to come back another time to talk about that Corvette. Chris Hagman went, and, you know, she's a special ed teacher, and she, she liked reevaluating, reevaluating how you teach math and splitting procedures, concepts, and application. A lot, a lot more with manipulatives for kids at the level she teaches and just the K math department being together and learning from each other. Thank you.
All right, now, to kind of wrap things up, you know, it's been a while since I've been in a calculus class, so I would rather be in the Corvette than in the calculus class. I know that. But to kind of put things in perspective, Lyndon Pam has spent a lot of last two years creating a foundation for the process in both Lincoln and Washington of why kids learn the way they do and how to create that, that foundation of why we discuss, why we inquire, and how that's going to grow. To stop that before they got to the middle school is doing the kids an injustice. So the next step, as we talked about here, is our goal is to build some foundation amongst the middle school teachers to create a culture of this is the way we want to continue that. Don't know where it's going to stop, but we do know it has to be part of the middle school, that five, six, seven, eight building. So we'll spend some time here in January, building some foundations for that. We'll do some reading, some viewing, some researching together. A lot of collaborative effort of where you are and where you started and how that's different now. I've had the good fortune of sitting in at Lincoln Elementary multiple days as kids transferred from decimal, or percents, fractions, and, decimals, percents, and fractions. So it was kind of interesting to see how that process went and how we can carry that over. So our goal is to be, like I said, to build the foundation for understanding as a collaborative effort and grow the capacity and scale that in some method into our five, six wing and our seven, eight wing for the next few years. And then we don't know what that's going to be like when we get to the high school. But again, on behalf of the math department, having that PD day to get up to Minnesota and spend time together in a van, driving up in a rainstorm, a lot of good talk there. Driving back tired, but enthused about working with these people. So thanks, thank you for the board and everyone for allowing us to do that. Any questions for us?
I just had one, of course, I've heard a number of good comments, but in my work, when we go to meetings like this, there's always good information presented at the meetings, but I think the value of the time spent together outside of the meetings is often overlooked. And obviously, you guys recognized it on the trip. So even though it's sometimes inconvenient to spend multiple nights away, you know, for maybe one or the other, it's, the value of it is, is, is an awesome thing, and the commitment to doing that is great. So am I correct in understanding that someone in the group was able to get courtside seats at the Timber Wolves, or was that? I mean, I...
That would be correct.
Just wanted to clear that up.
And that person might be in this group, and you can figure out who that was.
Oh, they're more socializing. Thank you.
Yeah. We look forward to the next challenges. Great networking and collaborative effort here, so again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and energy and effort as we continue to move forward with these programs. Next, we have agenda item seven, which is the China partnership presentation from Dr. Cox.
I'll come out here so I can look at all five of you at once while I talk. Justin's going to pull up the PowerPoint. So for several months, Josh Johnson and I have been engaged in conversations with Tom Pinkham, who has Iowa connections. In fact, one of our former employees is his niece. And I was introduced to him through a colleague at U and I. And he's a gentleman who has been living in China, working in school systems, and now has put together a partnership program between Iowa and China. And this is something that we've been kind of unrolling to see, all right, how would this work? And he was kind enough to send a PowerPoint so that I could explain this to the board. It's not really just for your information. As I said, I've been working on this for several months. It's new to you. January eleventh would be the first time that you would be asked to take any kind of formal action on this. So it's a two-plus-two program, two years in China, two years in an Iowa consortium partner school. And what drives this project, and this is very text heavy, this is not how I would do a PowerPoint, but we'll just get through this. It's got a lot of information for you. So you may or may not know that Chinese families value education and that their educational system lacks student development aspects. It's very rigorous. Creativity is not a part of it. It's very, you know, lots of hours, lots of work, and very structured. The government is open to reform. They realize the importance for reforming their system. There are Chinese students that are opting out of that traditional track that all students have taken in their country. And there are new Chinese international section schools that are forming. So the company is the International Education Development Corporation Limited, and Tom is the executive director of this. It's a US corporation. They are, they have contractual school relationships in China, and they are looking to contract with Iowa consortium partner schools. Mason City has already agreed to be the host school for this. They've got a memorandum of understanding that's with their attorney. And there are seven Iowa school superintendents, so me and six others who have expressed interest in, tell me more, how would this work at our school systems? So in total, eight of us that are looking to partner with this group to bring some Chinese students here to the US. IEMC is seeking to contract with the partner schools, and I have a copy of the memorandum of understanding that I would forward onto our attorneys after we have had a chance to kind of discuss this and see, is this something that you're interested in? So the program in China is to create an international section of a large Chinese education company school for students that want to study abroad. Mason City will be in charge of installing the US curriculum, and that'll be for grades nine and ten over in China at an international section of Mason City that is in China. And that would start in the fall of 2016, adding grades eleven and twelve in subsequent years. Staff core classes with US-certified teachers, and then Mason City monitors the quality of it. So they will take the lead in all of this. And there it is. Mason City takes the lead. Seven consortium partner schools, again, with interest. Chinese students would study their freshman and sophomore year in China with the option to attend school in Iowa for grades eleven and twelve. Could be in Mason City, could be in Charles City, could be in one of the other six school districts that are interested. And they're mostly in the eastern half of the state. Credit from China would transfer to Charles City. So the first two years of doing the American program, the Mason City curriculum, would then transfer in if a student came to us here in Charles City. And then if they successfully complete the graduation requirements over the next two years, they would get a Charles City diploma, which is something that the students would be very interested in receiving in China. NIAC would offer advanced placement courses and provide college credit. Here in Charles City, we would promote homestay options. And IEMC is willing to pay families $500 a month as a stipend to host a Chinese student. They will place any remaining students at the Opportunity Village in Clear Lake. And then IEMC would be in charge of room and board over there. They would focus on cultural development, activities, university tours for all of the students who are going to be over here. They would provide supervision and transportation. So let's say that we could only place one student with a family here in Charles City, somewhere in the district. But there were some other ones that wanted to attend, and they were living over in Clear Lake at that Opportunity Village. IEMC would then transport them back and forth between here and there. Get them over in time for class in the morning. At the end of the day, they would transport them back to that boarding opportunity. The students would pay $8,000 per year to attend. It would be tuition to attend Charles City High School. IEMC would provide Mandarin language teachers for the consortium partnership schools. Now, we would have to cooperate to schedule classes. We wouldn't get one here in Charles City and one in Mason City and one in each of the other six interested places. We would have to look at like an ICN-type operation or some other sharing that if the, if they sent two teachers, for example, one probably would be based in Mason City and teach, and we would take classes just like we would with any other ICN class. Or maybe it's a rotational system that they teach and they use the Polycom. And then one day they're in Mason City and the next day they're in Charles City so that at least you get a rotation of live and in-person versus just technology. But offering Mandarin would be obviously an enhancement to our high school offerings. IEMC would be responsible for the non-homestay, homestay students when they're not in school. So they'll have insurance on all the students. The language teachers would supervise them and other employees as well in that boarding operation over in Clear Lake that they mentioned on a previous slide. Our responsibility as a school system is to issue the F1 visa, and we would have to register with SEVIS, Homeland Security Organization. We would provide the same service to the Chinese students as our own students would receive. And after the program has developed in China, a spoken language will not be an issue. But in year one, there probably will be some issues with the first group of students that come over and their level of English ability. And so we would just have to know that going into it. They will screen applicants in the first year. And if there is an English as a second language issue, then IEMC will supplement that staff. And they may need some help with busing. And in the end, we grant a Charles City diploma to students who are successful in completing our requirements. IEMC is going to recruit at the International Fair at U and I. They're looking for teacher exchanges and for training programs for teachers in the US. So our teachers would have opportunities then to go over to China. Teachers over there coming to here, short term, longer term, up to us to work those details out. In the spring, they plan to set up two trips to Iowa, one for high school students and one for middle school. So for high school, it'd be one week touring schools, shadowing students, touring NIAC, U and I, University of Iowa. That's right, there's one missing.
Move on.
One for middle school. I don't know, he didn't put it in. Promoting enrollment in the China high school on the China side. So opportunity for students as well. Charles City students might want to enroll over in that China international school section starting in 2017. Like, I'd like to go spend a semester in China, taking, again, US core classes, taught in English, boarding provided at the school. I'm still on track to graduate, but I want the opportunity to learn Chinese language, be exposed to culture, and have this really neat experience, and then come back. Study and travel opportunities for Charles City students and family members, and then China cultural development events in Iowa. So what's in it for us? Global diversity, build relationships between China and the US, bringing Chinese language to our school, exchange and travel programs, homestay opportunities for families, expand our influence to a global level, help US people better understand China and vice versa, and then revenue to the US partner district. So that's kind of in a nutshell what we've been working on. And I'd be happy to answer some questions for you. I'd also be happy to pass them along to Tom if there are things that you'd like him to address.
How many did you think realistically here?
We're looking at four or five students.
Now, do the students get to select the school they want to attend?
You know, he and I have never talked about that. I think it will come down ultimately to how many of those interested schools actually jump on board and say, yes, we're in. If it's eight and there's a, I don't know. I guess I don't know and how they would decide between, I want to go to Charles City or Mason City when everything is just to them as foreign as if we were looking at places in China, like, how would I want to know? How would I know if I wanted to go to this city or that city? I don't know. He expects this to fill up rather quickly on the Chinese side with interested students.
Will they stay for the two years solid, or will they go back during the summers? What will their summers entail?
That's a good question. Haven't talked about that yet. I would assume that they would want to go back, spend a little time with family, but for many of these students, it could be that they're used to being sent off to boarding school options through middle school and ninth and 10th grade years as well. That it, it may be they just comfort the two years and stay.
Maybe I missed it, but for...
Terry, are you getting some of these questions? Because I'm going to forward these on to Tom. So how would, would students choose Charles City, or would they be assigned? Would they stay for the entire two years and go back over the summer?
Maybe I missed it, but costs associated with our students going over there? Is that...
That, there, no, you didn't miss it. There was no information on that.
Is there a school board exchange going to be offered at Sunday night?
I think school boards are uniquely American, so I don't know that that will be an opportunity.
We can teach them.
But it did say students and families, so I think there could be ways to strengthen that connection between the community and the community in China.
And I would imagine that all of the families that would take in a Chinese student would be vetted and screened and so forth, so that...
I would imagine as well. And who is coordinating that? Has not come through. Is that IEMC? Will Tom be coming over and doing that in person? Is that somebody over here that assumes that role, perhaps out of Mason City, coordinating for all of the North Iowa districts? I don't know.
What is Opportunity Village? What is that?
That they work with, they have consumers that...
Developmentally challenged individuals.
Okay.
And I'm assuming they must have open...
Open space?
Open space.
Something I thought of as well, you know, potentially this is going to have open space here and Charlie's plan is to develop it into more upscale units, but perhaps there is an opportunity that a small portion of the school could be boarding for a program like this. There's going to be an adult sent with them. Ideally, it's best that they're with families, that's how you actually learn the language and the culture, but if there's a fallback, it could be that maybe five units are reserved for this program or something like it.
And I'm sure it's something that you'll look at, but I think as the German program has done, that even if you look at with these students, maybe they don't stay with one family the entire time.
Right.
Because that type of commitment can, might possibly be overwhelming, but maybe they're shared between families.
Over two years.
That's a good idea.
I don't, I don't think they'd have any problem finding two or three families to take them in.
Especially if they're paying them.
I don't think so, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Especially if they're being paid subsidized.
But the benefit is, so many benefits.
Just, there's, to be able to have a Mandarin class, we've had this discussion down at different board conventions and when we've met with other districts that that is the number one language, there's lots of demand in the industrial world and in the professional world for people that can speak fluent Mandarin for us to offer that in Charles City, Iowa. It's outstanding.
I think it's going to be a wonderful opportunity for us to look forward to in the future and the plan is that we're going to bring this partnership to a meeting in January for...
I'll bring it back on January 11th.
Okay.
And I can send the MOU to our attorneys to have them start looking at it now, or I can wait till January 11th when you take action.
Now, send it.
Okay.
Get the ball rolling, get their opinions before we review it in January.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's go from Asia to South America.
So, this is you again.
This is. So, I was blessed to be able to go to Buenos Aires as part of the Fulbright City of Buenos Aires Administrator Exchange in November. You'll recall that from September 27th through October 16th, we had Graciela Uiquin here in Charles City. She is a supervisor, closest job position would be superintendent of technical, technical high schools in Buenos Aires and she is Zone 1. And there are either six or eight zones, I don't have a definitive answer on that, but she is Zone 1 supervisor and her husband Juan is Zone 2A supervisor. And so, I wanted to run you through a little bit of my experience down in South America. The program goals were to support mutual understanding between schoolteachers and principals in the US and Argentina through professional development and exchange. And then secondarily, to provide US and Argentine administrators the opportunity to interact with one another, with other principals and superintendents, teachers, students and community leaders and to share perspectives and best practice from their respective school systems and management. So in November, there were 10 of us from the US, from Florida, Illinois, Iowa, Seattle, North Carolina, I think those five areas, there were 10 of us that went, which means that 15 Americans are going to go in June. That was the second opportunity to go. This is a little bit dark, but it's a picture on the 14th floor of their Department of Education, kind of looking out over the city. This is the exchange partners, both US and Argentine. I was able to do, I think, six, five, two, three, four, five, five school visits. I went to a youth center and then I'll show you a seventh school experience that I also had when I was down there. I was only able to be in, my time was really two weekends and then one week, the week of November 9th through the 13th. So, five school days where I could actually be in schools. Graciela was here for three weeks, so there was a little bit of imbalance. She got to see and do a lot more in her time than I was able to in my 10 days or so. And because she supervises technical high schools, those were the places that I went on my visit, with one exception. So, just to give you a little perspective, she mentioned Otto Krause in Spanish, or Otto Kraus is how we would say it, the biggest, most important technical school in South America, has 1,887 students. It is a city block long, celebrated its 100th year. From the front, there was no good way to get a picture because the trees have grown up strategically like they should over 100 years and it totally blocks the view of the school. But this is a view from one of the two courtyards inside the technical school. Just to give you a little perspective, you can see the size of the people compared to the balcony. I've got a shot I'm not going to share with you due to lack of time, of me in a hallway and the hallway has to measure close to 30 feet tall. I mean, it's just amazing, the, the architecture of this building. So, we were there toward the end of the school term, the, the school year is over now in Argentina and kids were getting ready for the expo where they showcase, like we'll be doing with our project-based learning, of the things that they've been doing in class. And so, this is a construction class and started off on a Monday there and the vice principal came in, met with me and Graciela and the head principal and said, hey, we just got a house donated to us, we're going to put it up in the patio. And I thought, well, that's kind of different. So, here's, here's the construction class and this is what they did over the course of about a day and a half of just assembling this house, albeit it's a small house, but still, they had to know how to put the walls up and how to screw it all together correctly and it involved a lot of teamwork and it was interesting to watch this process so that it was ready to go for the parents and the public when they came on that Friday and Saturday. One whole building behind the school is for the workshops. Their system is different in that when we get to 7th grade, we move on to middle school or junior high, depending on where you go to school. When you get to age 13, what would be 7th grade for us, you choose, are you going to a comprehensive system or are you going to a technical system? And if you choose a, a technical school, over the next six years, you will develop the skills and the certifications to be able to go out and get a good job when you graduate. Graciela pointed out that only one out of every four kids makes it to that graduation date and that's her big push is to increase that rate. But they have, in order to support this system, just fantastic workshops and workshop space for students. So, here's first year students that have elected to pursue construction as their chosen field and they're engaged in typical first year construction activities, ages 13 and 14. Here's a first year metals student and this is atypical because this is a female. And in technical schools, as I kept walking around classrooms and just seeing kids, I'm going to guess 80% male. Probably not a big shock, but when I saw a young lady working here, I begged her to let me take her picture, said, I won't show your face, but let me at least get a picture of you working here on your metals project. These are some tools built by first and second year students. And then an exhibition of work on that Friday. And so, the electronics students had put this display together and this was just in the, in the foyer of the school. So when you come in, a security guard in the check-in area, off to one side is where this exhibit was taking place. We're going to move now to the area of town called La Boca, a very working-class neighborhood and this is in Juan's zone, so we're in Zone 2A. And he invited me to come down to the Maestro Kincaela Technical School. Kincaela Martin was a very famous artist in La Boca and he gave the money to build this school. He also did this work of art and it's in an outdoor patio, so it's gone through the process to be weatherized. If you look really closely at the top of that wall, I know it's hard to see, but you'll notice the shattered glass in cement so that you keep unwanted people from climbing over the walls and vandalizing the school or vandalizing the artwork. Maestro Kincaela School, one of their emphases is graphic production and so, they are producing, I believe it was a school calendar, is what you'll see in the tray there. And again, this is students who do all the layout, all the design and learn the production as well. We're going to jump to one of Graciela's schools, Manuel Belgrano, Technical School Number 11. And at this school, optics is one of the career paths that you can follow. So, the exact same thing that you would find if you went to Dr. Ops' office here in town or you put your little chin on the, the holder and zoom up the, the stuff with the flippy things, that's what the kids are, that's technical term. That's what the, that's what the students are using as they learn how to do all of those processes and be in, I assume, an optic technician. They also had that awful thing that shoots the air out at your eye to test for glaucoma and they were practicing this on one another. They were also practicing putting contact lenses into one another and then checking for fit. I don't think the next picture has that. Yeah, no. So, just amazing to see, hey, get over here, let me stick my finger in your eye, put a contact in and then put your chin over here so I can check to see, is it fitting? Do we need to make any adjustments? And this is fifth, I believe, fifth year optical students who were doing this. Teachers who are very proud of all of the, the things that they were doing. I don't have a picture of this, but it would be very common for me to walk into a room and there are three or four teachers and 15 students. Because they've got the relationship between, you know, pay and number of people backward from what we have. So, where we have one person, they would have four. Where we have our salary, they would make a fourth of that. So in the end, it kind of all comes out even. But the, the instructor here is very proud of the fact that they abide by the international standards of optics and the students here learn to work to that level so that when they do graduate, immediately they're employable. Carpentry workshop as well, that was another of the emphases at this Belgrano School. We went at night, remember how she talked about three different shifts? You can go 8 to noon, 1 to 6 or 7 to 11 or midnight, kind of varies by school. We went to this one probably at 7 o'clock and left somewhere around, I don't know, 9 or 9:30. And the students who were here at night are the ones who have dropped out of school and are trying to come back and finish a degree program so that they can get a better job than the one they currently have. So the night class that I started in at 7 o'clock had two students and in the 30 minutes that I was there, there were seven. It was just sort of a, oh, now I'm here, now I'm here, the subway was running late, I got stuck in traffic, whatever, and the teacher just kind of rolled with it and, okay, take a seat, let's go, and kept going with the instruction. So it was interesting to see that aspect of it as well. Technical School 15, Mipo, is in graphic arts and publicity, TV, radio, those types of things focused for their school. This would be their administrative team, Juan and the supervisor and then the principal and the dean, et cetera. Because they focus on communications, of course, with a foreigner present, it's like, hey, grab that guy, let's do an interview. So, the one gal who's giving the thumbs up was the bravest soul of all. She had the strongest, strongest English skills and so she was prepared to do an English interview with me. I said, no, no, let's do a Spanglish interview and that got a good laugh from this crew, who were all the Freddie Cats and didn't want to do the interview. So we did a, I don't know, a 10-minute interview in English and Spanish both and posed for a selfie afterward and the gal over in the corner was recording it off her phone, it's being recorded for the radio and they were also doing, people taking camera shots and then some video as well, and then they'd take that and use it for their academic purposes. So, fifth or sixth year, I don't recall which, at this school. Let's jump over to Alejandro Volta. It was, you'll notice on the facade, Technical School 9, but it's been renumbered to 19, so that's why there's two numbers up there. This used to be a bike factory. The original school was to the left and they had to tear it down to clear out the intersection and make it a little more passable for cars, so they just moved it down like two spaces into a bike factory. There were different levels where I literally had to duck like this going up steps because the floor of the next, or the, yeah, the floor of the, the floor above us was coming down into the stairwell and, you know, nothing that would be workable here in the US, but it was just taped with the yellow and black, like, hey, watch out, don't bump your head and keep going. So, second year students working on electronics, making cars go with a little battery and they had a set of criteria they had to abide by. Because you do one shift of regular classes, here's world history, they're getting ready for their final exam on Rome and so it's kind of the juxtaposition of both, that we are learning the regular core content and we also have to spend time in the workshops. And now, the Institute of Our Lady of the Miracle of Cacupe. This is a, the patron saint of Paraguay, is what I understand, and the area that we are going into is strongly dominated by Paraguayan immigrants. So, I, I put on here, this was our way in. Graciela, her husband has a pickup truck and they don't ever go to this neighborhood, so we couldn't drive in because it wouldn't be safe for us to do so. We had to meet on a street corner, get into this vehicle, which is the vice principal's car, and then enter the neighborhood. And because the car was known to the people, then it'd be okay. So, she'd asked me before we started the week, do you want just all the best or do you want authentic? And I said, I want authentic. So, like, okay, we're going to an authentic school that serves the poorest of the poor. I didn't notice this when I was walking in, but you'll, you'll see in the blue and in the white, there are two bullet holes. Sadly, there'd been some students who were murdered, I don't know, a year or two prior to this in a drive-by shooting and they've got a person at the door and we parked right in front of the door, got out into the school right away. I wasn't feeling really that unsafe because we were with the vice principal and it looked just kind of like a normal day. It was inside where he said, did you notice the bullet holes? Where I went, no, I didn't. Okay, now, all right, I'm going to look a little more closely here. Locked doors at the top and, you know, look at the screening as well, that just, it's like, I don't know, eight, 10 feet tall, really a secure environment to keep kids who are at school safe from outside distractions. A view from the principal's office. This gives you a little glimpse of life in this area. This is an area of about 60,000 people. Running water, no. Running sanitary, no. Electrical, I didn't include any pictures, but it would be like, you know, lots of cables kind of run off of a big one and it didn't look safe at all electrical-wise and just a very interesting experience. The vice principal has been here for quite a while. He is very proud of this picture. Cardinal Bergolio, who you would know as Pope Francis, is from Buenos Aires, Argentina. He used to frequent this neighborhood. He and a priest named Father Pepe had started this school and he would come on teacher training days quite frequently and just visit with teachers and kind of see, how are things going, what are your needs? And then off he would go. He would ride the bus to come in here. One time the bus got stuck, so he just got off and walked like, I don't know how many blocks to, to finish the rest of the trip to the school. But he was very much a priest of the poor and because that was known, he didn't have issues then with walking or being in the neighborhood either. So we go from that experience, that actually was Thursday, back two days to the US Embassy in a mansion that had been built, I don't know, 100 years ago by the Bosch family. And the US ended up purchasing this building and it became the US Embassy. So, each of us who were in the program received a certificate and we received it from Noam Mamet, who is the US Ambassador to Argentina. It's a pretty nice affair at the embassy. Norma Gonzalez is the lady in the white dress on the right and she's the director of the Fulbright Program in Argentina. This would be a shot of all of us and then the Fulbright staff and some staff from the embassy as well. Let me see if, is there a laser pointer on here?
There is.
Top button. There we go. This guy is Esteban Burrich. He is now the National Minister of Education. This is who Graciela works for as one of her three jobs. And this would be the ambassador and these two are from the city of Buenos Aires and they served as our tour guides. And I think, yep, right back there. This is who Graciela works for as one of her three jobs, and this would be the ambassador, and these two are from the city of Buenos Aires, and they served as our tour guides. And I think, yep, right back there. Just peeking in the crowd, that's me. Cultural experiences. Teatro Colon, the Columbus Theater, probably the most important opera house in all of South America. Incredible acoustics, such that you could just carry on a normal conversation, and you can be heard, basically, any other spot in the theater, which means that if you are rustling the paper to put a candy in your mouth, everyone else is going to hear that, and so, then you have to, you know, guard against too much talking and those types of things. But no need for microphones on stage, it just voices project. Also, there's like a cupola up on top, and there's this round ring with an opening, I don't know, maybe an inch wide. When this was designed 100 years ago, lots of forethought went into it. An actor can stand up there and speak, and it would sound like a voice from heaven is speaking to you, and you can't really tell where's that voice coming from. Or, for the singers, they can do like, you know, the aria from Heaven type of thing, and just some interesting acoustics with this theater. A night of jazz, our first Saturday, they took us to a concert, so mega big band performed, it was pretty interesting. Rotary Club, I'm a Rotarian, so it was a huge thrill for me to attend a Rotary Club meeting. It's the original Rotary Club of Buenos Aires that I got to attend, at the Plaza Hotel. 50 bucks to enter for lunch, and if you're not a Rotarian, you don't get in. They had about 300 members, probably 185 were there that day. Happened to be the day they were celebrating the 96th birthday of that Rotary Club, so we had birthday cake, we sang Happy Birthday in English, because the club president likes to sing in English. And, the guy speaking is a famed journalist, publisher in Buenos Aires. And I had to have a tie and coat. I came in a sport coat, because I knew that much, but I thought I might be okay with no tie, and immediately, he said, do you have a tie, or shall I give you one? And I pulled one out of my coat, said, Noah, I'm good, and put my tie on. So, interesting experience to compare with Rotary here in the US. City tour, this is their White House, which is actually pink. Got to see some other big sites in one of those English double-decker, open-air bus type things. Presidential elections, which I mentioned, they were in the runoff, and kind of in a surprise, the mayor of Buenos Aires defeated the governor of the province of Buenos Aires to become the next president, and he actually started five days ago now. School bus, it's a weird shade of orange, they have curtains, and kind of saw these all over, and they have the phone number on the side, too. I didn't, didn't understand that. And then, incredible hospitality in Argentina. This is Graciela's husband Juan on the left, in a Charles City Comets shirt. Her son had just taken off his Charles City Whitewater shirt, that's Eduardo, and then, I was given a jersey of Urakan, the local soccer team in their neighborhood. And, of course, lots of great food. And that takes us to the end. Cool.
Looks like you had a great time.
A great time, very educational time for Graciela as well. Again, I don't know if I shared this publicly at a board meeting. She was taking notes, she did a much, much better job than I did. I, I don't know how she did it, because the days were so long, I could never find the time to just sit down and write. She had 180 typed pages by the time she was done with her three weeks, notating everything that was going on here in our school system, the cultural things that we did with her, her impressions, her thoughts for how she could change their system when she got back to Argentina. I might have 10, so, maybe 15, but, very educational.
It was very, very nice, and this was at no cost at all to our school district.
No. Nope. I used vacation days, I didn't put in a request for professional leave.
Just wanted to punctuate that.
Yeah.
How come they cut your time back to 10 days when I stayed here three weeks?
It's a good question, the same question I had. My guess is, if it had been three weeks, I couldn't have gone, certainly not during the school year, and it would have been somewhat challenging even to go in June for three weeks. And I'm guessing that's the reason that ours is only 10 days or so, 10, 11 days.
But their government pays for them to come here.
The city of Buenos Aires and the Fulbright Commission partner together, and now that Macri has won the presidency, the National Minister of Education has said, I want to see this expand, and in the past, it had been, you know, different parts of the country that had come back to just Buenos Aires. He wants to see it expand to the province and then back to the nation. Fulbright is interested in that, and the US Embassy, as the third partner, not financially with this, is also looking at restructuring how they do their funding to send Argentines abroad. Currently, they send a very few number of people, they spend a lot of money on them, and they're looking at spending that same amount of money, but sending a lot of folks instead, for short-term.
Yeah.
Instead of long-term.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Agenda Item 9, the school calendar revision. As the agenda notes that the Iowa caucuses are set for the evening of Monday, February 1st of 2016, if you want to participate in that process, you have to be present before 7:00 PM. We currently have parent-teacher conferences set for Monday, February 1st, from 11:00 AM till 7:00 PM. We're looking at changing the parent-teacher conferences to 9:30 AM to 5:30 PM, so that not only faculty, but parents who wish to attend the Iowa caucuses would be able to do so. Do we have any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve changing the schedule of parent-teacher conferences on Monday, February 1st, 2016, to 9:30 AM until 5:30 PM.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the changing, the schedule of parent-teacher conferences on Monday, February 1st, to 9:30 AM until 5:30 PM. Any questions or comments from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried 5 to 0. Agenda Item 10 is cost-saving measures, and we'll let Dr. Cox and/or Terry O'Brien take this.
We're going to share this one. So, we have some cost reductions that we need to make, our enrollment, our budget is dictated by enrollment. Enrollment had a second-year decline, not quite 11 students this year, 47 students the previous year. The Iowa school funding for schools is not as straightforward and simple as one would think. So, it isn't a matter of, there are 11 fewer students times $6,500, so then there should be $70,000, $75,000 less in money. How is that different from the number that I saw in the press? Instead, when you have a loss of students, the first year, there's a budget guarantee of 101% of what you had the previous year, and then the second year of a loss, that budget guarantee goes away. So, do we want to put anything up, or do we want to just talk from the sheet? Board members have a, just a simple worksheet here. Justin, can you put it up, just so? Just click?
Oh, there you go.
So, in 1415, we were not on the budget guarantee, we had 1,589 students. In 1516, we were on the budget guarantee, that was the loss of the 47, we dropped down to 1,542. We're on the budget guarantee again for 1617, the loss of 11 students, basically. So, as you look down and across, Terry has put a couple of things, excuse me, in bold to draw your attention. The 10.2 million per people funding without the guarantee in 1415 became $10,034,204 of funding without the guarantee in 1516, down to 9.9 million in 1617. And you can see where that budget guarantee number takes us. In 1516, it actually restored us to 10.3 million, but now, we're back to $10,134,000, which is a loss in that red of 180,000. Every year, things cost more. Prices don't stay the same, there are increases. As our staff ages one year, it costs us more. We have anticipated settlement costs as well, so, all of those things that we know are going to cost us more in the coming year, we just conservatively put in 370,000. When you add that to the negative 180,000 from the loss of that budget guarantee, we are anticipating needing $550,000 worth of reductions for next year. So, that's how we get from, I thought it was simple, just 6,500 times however many kids you lost from last year to, here's where that 550 comes from. Terry, what do you want to add into any of that?
I guess, to kind of put it in perspective, if in 1516, there wasn't the budget guarantee, we would have had to have reduced 612,000 last year. So, we were helped last year, and if we would have had increasing enrollment, it might have evened out that reduction. But, as it is, two years of declining enrollment, we, you know, the budget guarantee is for one year only, so now, we need to, to make up that loss of the budget guarantee from last year.
We also had the 1.25% increase in supplemental state aid. This year, that's going to be between 0 and 1%, according to all indicators that we have, and it won't be higher than 1%. Just pick up any edition of the Des Moines Register and read comments from legislators, and you'll know that the funding outlook doesn't look bright when it comes to SSA. They're going to point to the 150 million that's been funneled into teacher leadership. Teacher leadership dollars is extra pay for extra work. None of that keeps the lights on, none of it runs our buses. It's only meant to be for those leadership positions. Again, the extra work, so they're getting extra pay out of that 150 million statewide.
And that's just for extra work, that doesn't pay for their daily teaching costs.
Right.
Let's reemphasize that again. It's for extracurricular work, basically.
So, we're looking at reductions. Obviously, if our increases in operational costs were less, then there'd be less to reduce. The plan right now is to visit with staff and put together a list of options that we would look at in March. There's really no need to rush into all of this. The governor said repeatedly that he will introduce on the second day of the session, which is January 12th, his recommendation for supplemental state aid. Again, I'm guessing it's going to be somewhere between 0 and 1%. That leaves the House and the Senate to do what they want, but at least he'll put forward his recommendation. That'll give us a little bit better idea, but even if it was up to 1.7%, it still does nothing to change any of these numbers, and there's no indication that it's going to be higher than 1, given all the Medicaid news that you also are reading, and the reduced revenue projections that they are obligated to follow as they go forward with their budget. So, March 21st would be a date where I would present, here's a list of options for you to consider. March 28 would be another evening of public comment. Obviously, people can comment on the 21st when it's presented, and then formal action by the board would take place on April 11th, I should say, 2016. Early retirement is something that we'll talk about in the next agenda item. Could impact these numbers, having some positions that we could absorb without having to reduce people, and teacher leadership, in theory, also could help us with some of that as well. But, again, there are too many unknowns right now, and I think the wiser move is to wait and just explore all the options that we do have between now and the end of March.
Go ahead.
Buildings and grounds, this morning, we had a conversation about, just kind of briefly informal conversation, about utility costs and operation, building operational costs next year and how it plays into these numbers. Terry's going to do some further work on that with the new facility, and, you know, the scenarios of our role or ownership or leasing, whatever it may be, in this facility, operational costs of the new one, and that'll hopefully help refine this number some extent to.
Is the estimate of the supplemental state aid, even though we don't know exactly what that number is, is any of that factored into this new money increase?
Zero.
Well, we used a 0% as in the example.
Worst-case scenario.
But it would take greater than 1.7% to have any effect, because if we were to go to 1%, it would just lower our budget guarantee, so we wouldn't get any new money, it would just lower the amount that we would be able to levy through property tax, because we'd get more from the state.
Okay.
It's all going to be dependent upon what comes out of Des Moines, and we know they're already 11 months behind what they're legally required to tell us what supplemental state aid for the next fiscal year will be.
Yes.
So, at the moment, we're just looking to approve the timeline as proposed by administration.
It's a discussion.
It says a recommendation, but it's a discussion.
Probably should have been listed as an action item.
Isn't it an action?
We've changed those things before, that if, and if it just says discussion, we can have action, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the timeline and approach as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the timeline and approach as presented by administration. Any discussion? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried 5 to 0. Agenda Item 11 is early retirement policies.
So, our finance committee has met a couple of times to talk about this issue. We've talked through
Various scenarios.
Various scenarios about early retirement and the whole philosophy of early retirement. Decided that we would like to propose an early retirement plan again this year. The two changes in it are dropping the years of service down from 15 to 10, and then increasing the amount from the last time from 15 to 20,000. This expands a pool of people who potentially could take it. The higher number makes it potentially more appealing as well. And again, early retirement is one of these factors into how much of our reductions will come through, through this versus cutting programming or cutting back in other areas.
How many, you have an idea on the pool, how many people in the pool that?
There are 18 that would be eligible.
18 eligible? And we offered for support staff last year, is that, as, I know it was the first time, or we're not looking at?
We're not looking at that.
Not at this time.
At this time, no.
And are we putting a limit on the number, or are we just opening it up to all 18?
Just opening it up.
There won't be 18.
Just asking if we're opening it up to all 18.
Yes.
I got to redo again, what makes them eligible, 10 years of service?
10 years of service and age 55.
Age 55, okay.
No later than July, or excuse me, June 30th, 2016.
Theoretically approved tonight, they could file tomorrow paperwork?
Theoretically.
I see, are we giving them until February 15th?
Yes, to give them sufficient time to go consult with their financial advisors and...
And that leaves us enough time to help develop numbers for this?
Right.
The other thing is that this is one board policy, and we're combining the previous board policies... board policies that we had. We had one for professional staff, the teachers, and we had one for administrators or directors. We're just combining them all into one policy now. Keep things simple. Treat them all the same. Any thoughts as to what Lorraine and I, on the Finance Committee, along with the administration, came up with for a recommendation?
My only thought, I consider it was, you have the February 15th date, I think, if that was early enough to give us ample time to evaluate those positions, but if you...
Terry thinks so, so does Dr. Cox, so...
So, by the end of February, then we'll have a budget, you know, built and given to you to look at, so I think that'll be time enough.
And then the cost-saving measures would come to us on March 21st, so that gives them four and a half weeks from that deadline to finalize their cost-saving and take all of this into account. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 407.6, Licensed Employee Early Retirement and Exhibits 407.6E1, 407.6E2, and 407.6E3, which replaces 405.10 and 305.7, Early Retirement Policies for Teachers and Administrators, and waiving the second reading in order to provide accurate notice to eligible employees to consider early retirement.
And I'll second that.
So, Agenda Item 11 has been moved and seconded as presented. Any further discussion? See, that way I don't have to read that whole thing again, right? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 12 is Scott &amp; Anderson Architects Contract.
Motion to approve the Architectural Services Agreement with Scott &amp; Anderson Architects for work on the Transportation Center as presented.
I'll second that.
The Architectural Services Agreement with Scott &amp; Anderson Architects for work on the Transportation Center has been moved and seconded to approve as presented. Any conversation or discussion from the board? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 13, Middle School Addition Change Orders.
We talked about these this morning at Buildings and Grounds. Additional girts were purely structural support for the SIPs panels and additional piping. If you had any questions, Gene and Scott gave good explanation of a, what seemed to be somewhat of a miscommunication, the design of the...
Engineering.
The engineering, yeah, of the original design here, so something that they caught early enough, and is, my understanding, something that's dictated by code that we have to abide by, so...
Any motions?
Yeah, I move to approve the Middle School Addition Change Orders, 26 and 29.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Middle School Addition Change Orders, 26 and 29, as presented. Any further comments or discussion from board members? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 14 is the Pebble and ISL Renewal. Again, the Finance Committee has been meeting and discussing this, and somehow the exhibit didn't make it in, but Terry, you going to talk about this, or Dr. Cox?
I, I can. We have talked about the timing. There are several decisions that had to be made, the timing, the amount, the length, and right now, our timeline is to have a September vote, so we wouldn't...
In '16.
Yes. And we wouldn't need to start the board process until like the end of June, if that is the election date that we're looking at. That would get us completed by the April 15th of 2017. Now, we, our ISL isn't up until 2017. That would be the last time that we could certify the renewal for the ISL, so that we have to have done by. Right now, they're looking at, the Finance Committee discussed keeping the same percentage, 7 percent, and the same timeframe of five years. Now, they've also talked about running the Pebble election with this. Pebble isn't up until 2020, but if we could run it at the same time and then renew it for 10 years.
Expiration in 2017, so voting 20 in September, theoretically, how many opportunities do we have there to vote, to pass before our drop dead date?
We could also run it in February, and then, yeah, February, I think.
Just two?
And this vote is a simple majority?
Yes.
And this truly is an information and discussion item with no action, because the Finance Committee plans to have several more meetings in April and May as time approaches for the June deadline to bring action from the board. So, we'll be working on things this winter and, and seeing what comes out of Des Moines as well with the legislature, and then the plan was to, like you said, go back and start having more conversations to finalize things from our perspective.
Right.
In April and, and early May.
And this is basically a continuation. There's no new increases.
No new taxes.
No new taxes. This is just to keep things as they are and just reapprove it with the public.
So, moving on to Agenda Item 15, the financial report for November of 2015 is from Terry. Do you have any highlights you wanted to mention?
Yes, we just got, I just got our audit report spent finalized, so we'll be ready at the January meeting to present to you. Good, good report, good result. We will have another payment on our 2013 debt coming up at beginning of January. You'll notice something that we need to keep our eyes on. The hot lunch cash balance declined 33 percent, and it's something we need to, to look at in conjunction with what rates we're going to have next year, trying to increase participation, whatever that might involve. And then, lastly, our health fund expenses, if you do the comparison, we're right at 43 percent of our budget for the year, so our health fund expenses have been running significantly higher than last year.
I would, I'm going to suggest that in regards to the school lunch revenue, that we haven't had another meeting with the lunch, hot lunch committee, food service committee, that maybe it's time for that to have another meeting, to get together and maybe discuss options, look at program, look at the numbers more at a breakdown to decide where, what we're seeing. We have added probably some better quality, more expensive foods to our menu, and what we can do to better recoup those costs.
Well, I think that the effect of all of the changes that we've made is that our food costs are probably higher, and it would be, I'd be curious to see what the trend is in the food cost, because I suspect that that's a problem, as well as we just still aren't getting the kids to eat at the high school level.
You know, I think we need to look at participation rates.
Yep, yep.
But, if you compare to two years ago, we have 50 less students in the school that are eating and paying for part of the labor, you know? So, all of that would need to factor into our analysis of why is this?
Yeah, yeah.
Full-time service, there's a director. There's lots of moving parts there, and I think we need to look to possibly head off.
Well, she's done a good job with the changes that she's made, and we knew that they would be costly.
I think as Terry said, look at cost and look at participation, what we can do to up our revenues.
Is there a guideline we have to follow on what we charge for?
Yeah.
There is a federal calculator that they, they tell you how much you need to increase each year, which has actually made us increase our lunch prices when we may not have done it that in the past. But, as far as like our own, you know, it, the only thing there is, is this federal calculator.
I'm sure it's something that administration continues to look at and monitor, and if you have a committee meeting, then have a committee meeting to further look at their data. Is there a motion to approve the financial report?
I move to approve the financial report.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the financial report for November of 2015. Any further discussion or questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 16 is the consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items listed below.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
I will abstain.
Dyte?
Yes. Motion carried four to one.
Four to, four to zero.
Four to zero with one abstention. Agenda Item 17 is correspondence, the enrollment survey. Summary. It's in there at the end, and it showed a slight increase in enrollment.
Up six.
Cumulative, right?
Right, from there you're getting it here.
Agenda Item 18 is the important upcoming dates. Winter break is fast approaching.
Winter break is fast approaching.
Doesn't seem like it outside, but we've got a special meeting tomorrow night at
7:00 P.M. Classes resume January 4th. Got that special meeting on January 5th at noon at the Y, and then January dates.
May I make a couple comments? I mean, not, not about this, but about things that I should have made if I had been here? Can we put that in here now?
It's...
Just a couple, huh? Wait till next meet?
Yeah.
That's fine.
No other business come before the board, we will adjourn.